I'm going to do is I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session at seven o'clock. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mrs. Capiscus. Mrs. Costa. Because I was hoping Mrs. Capiscus would second, but she didn't. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of September 10, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And there were no votes taken in closed session. Would you please stand with me for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe we have some guests.
Good and welfare.
Good first, okay. All right. We'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee during good and welfare, please begin with your name and your address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is there anyone that would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing, hearing none? We'll go into recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start with a little back-to-school supply donation information for the committee. Over the past few years, Thermo Fisher Scientific and Helping Hands of the West Bay Collaborative have generously supported our Wind Socket students and teachers through their annual back-to-school supply drives. This dedicated group has collected an incredible array of items, including backpacks, lunchboxes, pencils, pens, crayons, and much more to help ensure our students are well-prepared for the school year. On behalf of the staff and the students of the Wind Socket Education Department, we extend our deepest thanks to the staff of Thermo Fisher Scientific and the residents and team members of Helping Hands. Your continued generosity and commitment to our community is truly appreciated. Next, Mr. Chairman, I am going to recognize some incredible student athletes from Wind Socket High School and their coaches. So to do that, if we could go to the other side of the of the dais, I will begin that presentation. Mrs. Capiscus. So I want to first start by recognizing our Wind Socket High School baseball team last year that won the Division III State Championship. They had an incredible year. I think probably they'll go down as probably one of the greatest baseball teams in Wind Socket High School history with a 22-2 record. We are extremely proud. Yes, let's give it up. Give it up for our student athletes. And I will also recognize each of the coaches, but here to my right, you all know him and love him. This is our head coach, Mr. Drew Dyko. He's going to assist me in handing out these certificates. So I'm going to take my glasses off first because I can't read anything without them, or with them, I should say. So first, so when I call your name, if you are here, please come to the stage and I will hand you your certificate and the members of the school committee will congratulate you. Luke Gendron. Next, we have Joe Greenless. Our next student athlete is Julian DeJesus. Next, we have Caesar Vasquez. Next student athlete, Jordan Plant. As everyone here knows, with every championship team, championship baseball team, there are coaches and assistant coaches whose leadership and guidance support their student athletes so that they can be successful. And here in Wind Socket, that is couldn't be more true. I want to recognize, and if he would come up to the stage, Assistant Coach George Rodrick. Our next assistant coach, Thomas Gray. Yeah, I'll just announce them. So there are some members of the team who are unable to be here this evening, but I'm still going to announce their names. Assistant Coach Jessica Nickerson. And our two equipment managers, Pete and Joanne. And the rest are players, Davis Nova, Christopher Bousquet, Patrick Munger, Jace Rodriguez, Braylon Gilbo, Jordan Cola-Clevis, Ty Chorn, Evan Canoyer, David Sobalos, Maximus Garnow, Noah Levero, and Julius Perez. And last, but certainly not least, Head Coach Drew Dyko.
Thank you, everybody. We'll run it back.
So I just wanted to reach out and really thank you, Dr. McGee, school committee, parents, supporters, people in the community, and most importantly, the players. I know we only have five, but without you guys and the parents too, like you guys were amazing to coach. I'm really looking forward to this year and you should all be very proud of yourselves. Thank you so much.
If you wouldn't mind coming up, our student athletes, come up to the stage for a quick couple of pictures.
Problem.
Some of both.
Very nice, very nice.
Very nice. That was good. And does that cover the
That.
recognitions and announcements?
Covers the recognitions and announcements for this evening.
Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 27, 2025 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any corrections to those minutes? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I'll make a motion now to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to take any item out of order or discuss about discuss any item? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now we're going to communications. I'll ask Natalie and Fatima to give us your report. You need to speak into that mic. Thank you.
Hold on.
Hold on.
Hello, okay. As you guys already said, my name is Fatima Wabi. I'm a senior at Wind Socket High School and this is. Hi, I'm Natalie, a senior at Wind Socket High School as well. We're the new student representatives. We mentioned this last school year. To start off with the Sorry. To start off with the student report, we, the first thing we had this year was our senior sunrise. The senior sunrise was fun and a positive way to kick off this school year. A great number of students came to represent Wind Socket High School. The students there, we picked up trash, played games, took pictures, you know, laughed. And yeah, that was about our senior sunset, I mean sunrise. I am so sorry. And the first day of school, the first day of school for the freshmen went really smoothly. There was no problems, no issues. The students were on track mainly because of our peer mentors. The peer mentors were present to help guide new students to their classes, ask, like help them with any questions that they had. Hallways have been kept clean and organized ever since the first day of school, so that's been amazing. And Gannett has been working like really, really hard for the schedules and changing things, so. Yeah, I feel like everything this school year started off in a really smooth way. There was no problems that I've seen. If there were any, admin probably kept them a secret, which is a good thing, but yeah, it started off really smoothly.
So I'll be finishing the rest of the report with the sports teams. Fall sports are officially underway with strong participation in school spirit. The volleyball team has won their first game this past Monday against Two Times Square Academy. And the football team is having their first Friday game at the new field. Today was actually their ribbon ceremony. And the Nova notices assemblies, open assemblies and advisory helped students settle into routine. New schedules have been distributed and now are in place, and that is for all. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Burke. First of all, Fatima and Natalie, I want to welcome you. This is your first, your first meeting of the school year.
Yeah, thank you.
We're so glad you're here.
Thank you so much.
I want to ask you a little bit more about that senior sunrise. I read about it a little bit. It really sounds exciting. How many students were involved besides picking up trash and playing games? What else did you involve in?
Yeah, there was, there was different groups, like different types of cliques there. Friends, we sat down, we listened to music, we ate food. Some people brought Dunkin', some people brought in other stuff because it was early in the morning. So a lot of stuff were like homemade. Oh, yeah, we made posters. We took a lot of pictures for just, you know, memories. A couple of people went swimming, not too many people.
Where'd you go swimming?
I forgot. It was a beach in Providence.
Yeah, it's a beach in Providence. I'm not, I'm not sure what.
Oh, you guys left campus for this?
Yeah, we did leave campus. So it was at a beach.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, we had a couple of people go swimming, but it was too cold. People did not want to swim.
And this is the first time it's been done?
No.
Every senior year does it?
I think every single senior year that I remember, so, yeah.
Which one?
This year, we didn't want to drive too far. Yeah, more local.
Did you two go?
Yes.
Yes.
It was a very tiring drive. Five thirty, I think we had to be there at.
Oh, wow. Nice and early.
That's great. Sounds like a great day.
Sun went up exactly at six oh nine.
Yeah.
Well, we're very happy that you're on, boy. And you're the student representatives representing the school. Glad you're here. Great job.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the student representative report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. McGee, may we have your report?
Yes, you may. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I will begin with personnel. So we have currently 11 teaching positions that are unfilled. We have a total of 35 paraprofessional positions across the district that are unfilled. We have one secretary position, which is at the Career Center, and one custodial position, which is here at Hamlet Middle School, second shift. As, as I, you know, as I typically share with you, you know, our HR department and each of our departments here are busy, along with our administrators and staff, trying to fill as many of these positions as quickly as we can. I know that, you know, while there are a lot of para positions that are unfilled, I know that Mrs. Morel and Mrs. Gerard have been working really hard to interview. They've interviewed many, many candidates. They've hired many folks for these positions. And I know that they have other interviews scheduled for the very near future. So our hope is that we fill as many of these positions as quickly as we can. I don't know if you have any questions regarding any of our personnel update information?
Anyone?
And secondly, I would like to speak a little bit about attendance matters. So the school committee and the community are aware of the importance of regular attendance for our students. And you're also aware that chronic absence is, is a problem both nationally and locally. Unfortunately, since the pandemic, that percentage of chronically absent students has, has increased. And I, I know that each year I present to the school committee, and I will be doing that later this month, the plans that each of our schools have to improve student attendance through a variety of activities, through attendance teams that each of our school has, where they reach out to students who are either chronically absent, which chronic absence means that a student is absent for 10% of the school year, which comes out to 18 days, two days per month. Doesn't seem like a lot, but it adds up. So I will present that to the committee. I wanted to also share with the committee that messages from the administrators, messages from myself to families explaining the importance of attendance has been sent out and will continue to be communicated with families throughout really the entirety of the year, just to give the committee a sense of our chronic absence from the 21-22 school year to the 23-24 school year. K through three in 21-22, 41% of our students were chronically absent. 22-23 school year, again, 41%. The 23-24 school year, 40%. So we had a 1% decrease in our student chronic absenteeism in grades K through three. And I don't have to explain to everyone that if you're looking at the importance of grade spans and attendance, certainly they all matter. We want student, we want all of our students in our schools as frequently as possible. But the importance of K through three is when students are learning how to read. And if our students are not in school, then they are going to struggle to read. And we also know that graduation rates from high school are decreased when students are not reading on grade level by grade three. So
That's right.
You know, that's something that isn't news to anyone, or it shouldn't be. Grades six through eight in 21-22, 55% of our students were chronically absent. 22-23 school year, 50%. So there was a 5% decrease. Unfortunately, 23-24 went up to 54% for a 1%, the decrease of 1% between, during the span of those three years. Grades nine through 12, you're going to be very pleased, not with the number, but with the fact that the chronic absence has decreased greatly from 59% in the 21-22 school year, 22-23 school year, 48%, and then the 23-24 school year, 44%. So there's a 15% decrease in our student chronic absenteeism at the high school. So kudos to the high school. Last year's data has not been released yet. This, the source of this data is, is, comes from KidsNet. So that data has not been released for, for last year. In addition to that information, in addition to the, you know, the work that, that we do, Kids Count, I should say, not KidsNet. KidsNet is a different organization. So kids, that's the Kids Count information. The commissioner and the governor recently released some attendance guidance to all school districts. I'm going to be talking to you much more about this in the coming month or two.
Right.
But, but just to, to give you a sense, there, the, the state, of course, really the, the state and the Department of Education have been working with school districts to decrease the number, the percentage of students who are chronically absent. What they are providing districts, and we're going to talk about this, what, what this is exactly going to look like moving forward, but they've created letter templates to send home to families for students who the previous year were chronically absent and who did not meet proficiency in ELA and Math. So students who have sort of unfortunately met that trifecta, which is not a trifecta you want to meet, but RIDE is basically saying to districts that there is a possibility that students will be retained moving forward. So that isn't something that, that obviously I'm going to formally announce right now, but I will say that that is something that we're going to discuss. We all know that, that the RIDE cast is only given to students in grades three through eight and 11. So grade spans that do not have a, a state assessment can use local assessments. For example, we use the STAR assessment. So, but again, that's something that we're going to be talking about as a district because I think that, you know, we, every, every year I look at the data and every year we have, if not the highest, one of the highest rates, chronic absence rates in the state. And this has just got to stop. And, you know, I, I think that, and, and parents are going to hear a lot more from me. You've got to make sure you're sending your kids to school, period. I understand that there are circumstances sometimes beyond your control. I'm not saying send your child to school if they have a fever. I'm not saying to send your child to school if they are physically ill. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if there's no excuse for your child to come to school, they need to come to school. Because if they're not sitting in a classroom, they're not going to learn. It's a cascading effect. Our test scores are going to continue to be low if students are not coming to school learning. Our teachers work extremely hard to put our, their lessons together, to teach the standards that our students are going to be assessed on. But if they're not sitting there, they're not going to learn that information. And as a result, their reading levels will be low. Their risk of not graduating from high school will increase. You've got to get them to school. That's just all there is to it. So there will be more coming out that I'll be sharing and our, our district administrators and our building level administrators will be sharing. But again, it, it's, it has to change and we need the cooperation of our families and our parents so that this can change. Love to
Any questions?
Answer any questions you might have.
Mrs. Capiscus.
How did you know?
I know you.
Actually, what I, what I want to say is a comment. I hear from a lot of people that have kids in preschool and kindergarten. Well, attendance isn't mandatory for our kids, and that may be true under the law. But understand something. The student, the seat that your student is sitting in is an expensive seat. It's a seat that we're paying staff for. We're paying for curriculum for that seat. And if you choose that your child is not going to attend the non-mandatory preschool and the non-mandatory kindergarten, please don't sign them up because there are other children that do want to be there and do want to be in those seats. And if you're still saying, well, I'm still not going to send them, understand something. Pre-K and kindergarten is where kids learn what school is. It's where you learn how to stand in line. It's where you learn how to take turns. It's where you learn how to play with others. And the kids in kindergarten this year were warned in 2020. Those are the kids that lived in the pandemic. Those are the kids that most need to learn social skills. And that's what pre-K and K are for, to teach you to play cooperatively with others. Why is that important? Because you're going to be working with others the rest of your Because you're going to be working with others the rest of your life. But most importantly, you're going to be teaching your kids the importance of being there, showing up, fulfilling your responsibilities every single day, skills they need as adults, soft skills, but skills nonetheless. And if they're not there, it's, we're talking pre-K, K, up through grade, in my opinion, grade eight. If your kids are not in school, that's on you. It's your job as a parent to get your kid to school. Trust me, I had a child who did not want to go to school. And you know what? He got in the car every single day and he went. You have to go. It's your job. And my son, I'm proud to say now, holds a job and has held it for two years and has had not one single absence because he learned the importance of being there when it's your responsibility to do so. You're not just teaching your kids reading, writing, and math, you're teaching your kids how to adult. So please send them to school. That's the first skill they need to learn. Thank you.
Dr. McGee, I agree with, with you and what Mrs. Kepiscus has been saying. And the phone calls, the emails that I get throughout the year from parents, you can tell the parents really care about their kids. They really care about them, but yet they don't get them to school. Parents, get your children to school because you are shortchanging them. You're not doing your best by keeping them home or not making sure they go to school. The last thing you want to do is to shortchange them. So do the hard stuff, get them up, put them in a car, walk with them, but get them to school so that they will thrive and really do well with their education. Mr. Chairman, the message I always used to teach to my students for over the years is that being a student right now until you're 18 and 19 is your number one job. Not a part-time job, not a babysitter job, not even being an athlete. Your number one job is to be a full-time student, maybe I need to underscore that, a full-time student until you finish and then you can be what you want. And to underscore what Dr. McGee says, is an issue today with reading. The test scores have shown that, the students' test scores have gone down with reading. Part of the reason, I believe, is because of this, the cell phone. There was a time when I was teaching and in the classroom, I would see students walk around with books in their hand. Now they walk around with cell phones. Now that's not just the only reason, but again, it underscores the need to be in the classroom, to increase their reading levels, to increase their reading scores. And in that way, attendance is the way to do it. I used to always say even to my daughter, sick or sore, out the door. All right? Now, obviously if you're sick, you don't go to school, but sick or sore, out the door. And she had great attendance, so that's always a good thing. So, thank you. And let's remember that reading is not just reading, because how do you do math problems if you can't read and understand the problems? So whatever happens in the reading class that you're not there for, you're also going to miss out on all the other courses that you might think don't require reading, but it, but they do. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Next we'll go into the subcommittee reports, and I'll ask Mrs. Kepiscus to give us the CILAC update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CILAC meeting was scheduled for September 4, Thursday night, 2025 at 6:00 PM. It was held remotely. As has unfortunately become the case of late, and despite Dr. McGee including an invitation to the CILAC meeting in his Cultivating the Community newsletter on the Sunday before the meeting, only the usual WED staff and administrators were present for the remote meeting. No parents, guardians, or family members were in attendance. As a result, no meeting was conducted and the agenda from this 9/4/25 meeting will be held and become the agenda for the next meeting, which is currently scheduled for 10/2/25. The acting chair, that's me, does not know what more we can do to bring attention to CILAC meetings. The CILAC brochure is offered to parents at each IEP meeting conducted in district. The schedule of meetings for the 2025, 2026 school year has been provided to all principals and service providers, an email to every single prior CILAC participant who is on my email mailing list. We tried phone blasts to all WED families, all of them, whether or not they have special ed students. At this point, as a courtesy to those faithful WED staff members who make the time in their schedules to attend, often for naught, I am giving due consideration to whether or not we should continue to schedule and try to conduct meetings. This is the third meeting in a row with no parents, guardians, or families in attendance. After 20 years as chair, I can affirmatively state that attendance has never been so poor for so long. To those parents, guardians, and families who so often like to speak poorly of the district's efforts to help their children, especially those with special needs, where are you? What more can we do to involve you in your children's education? When will you step up to the plate for your own children? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any comments, questions for her? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Mrs. Kepiscus, you're doing such a great job. I'm going to ask you to give us the curriculum update.
Mr. Chair, and the committee, the curriculum subcommittee met on Monday, September 9th at 3:30 PM. The meeting was called to order at 3:33 because Dr. McGee was late. You're welcome. The minutes for our prior meeting were approved, and then we went into our main topic, which is the new MLL regulations. Director Rania Agia reviewed the new MLL multilingual learners regulations that issued from RIDE, which must be implemented by all districts by school year 2020, 2023, 2030, 2031, in order to remain compliant. At this point in time, Director Agia said that we were almost compliant with the new regulations at present. The regulations set out the manner which instruction to MLL students is to occur and includes numerous changes in vocabulary around this model. The changes move MLL education from two models, three models to two models, excuse me, bringing you the middle school and high school instruction in line with what was currently done in the elementary school level, where MLL students have an MLL certified instructor all day as they do not move from class to class, which unfortunately in the middle school and high school exposes them to different staff in each block or period. Concerns around staffing needs were discussed, and the committee was assured that at present staffing, we are already almost compliant. Staffing at the elementary school level should not change. We would likely need to add just a few more LLL trained, MLL trained staff at the middle school and high school levels. In terms of MLL training, the regulations appear to fall in line with the training required for recognizing dyslexia in students and providing them with the necessary training for staff to identify and provide for the needs of these students. As a result, most staff who are not already MLL certified may be required to take training, which at this point is being offered to staff free of charge. It will not make them certified, but it will make us in compliance. It is also noted that the needs of MLL students with IEPs are already addressed in the district, so little change is anticipated in that area. Dr. Holt provided an update on the social studies curriculum, advising that due to budgetary concerns, plans to purchase the social studies curriculum for the middle school from McGraw-Hill has come to, has not come to fruition, but they have remained McGraw-Hill very generous with the WED in providing free use and support of some of their curriculum products in many instances. At the high school level, the social studies educators were not so happy with the McGraw-Hill curriculum and continue to look at other social studies curriculum. As for science curriculum, the WED has moved forward with the purchase of a new greenlit curriculum, but at present there are no greenlit curriculums, curricula for the elementary school level. As a result, RIDE has given districts an additional year to comply with the science curriculum requirements. Dr. Holt advises that many more kindergarten students showed up for classes on the first day of school than had registered in advance. And as a result, the district will be forced to open two additional class, kindergarten classrooms at post-year, for whom additional curriculum will need to be purchased, as well as one additional primary self-contained room, the location of which has yet to be determined. On the agenda item of instructional empowerment and model of instruction, Dr. Holt reported that leaders from all of our CSIP schools and district were in attendance in the same room we were in at, at a seminar all day, which was grant funded for those CSIP schools in this particular area. She reported that there appeared to be a renewed sense of energy in the room during the training given. The next curriculum subcommittee meeting will be on November 10th, 2025, at 3:30 at the Windsocket Middle School at Hamlet in room 124. With that, our meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus. Any questions or comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum subcommittee update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Next, I'll ask Mr. Leclerc to give us his report on the, for the District-wide School Climate Subcommittee.
Lynn, you did such a good job. Would you like to take this one also?
No.
Well said.
We had a.
I didn't create a summary. I mean.
We had a district-wide school climate meeting on 9/9. It started at 16:02, or 4:02 hours because certain individual was late.
Seems to be a pattern.
Elementary schools went first. So far this start of school year, it was notably smoother than in previous years. That's what they were talking about. However, there have been challenges with overages in pre-K and kindergarten due to an influx of late admissions. To address this, there's two additional kindergarten classes that are going to be added, which should resolve the issue hopefully. Also mentioned was, in kindergarten, there is a, is a higher student aggression from past years. I want to address this behavioral challenge at the elementary level, and new program was introduced this year. While it's effective, it is yet to be determined. It's hoped that it will improve outcomes. Some teachers experienced difficulty reporting incidents of assault through the web reporting system. The issue has been clarified. Teachers should be logged in with the web account when submitting reports, which should resolve the problem. There are also some still unfilled paraprofessional positions at the elementary schools. Interviews are ongoing and candidates are at various stages of hiring process. Additionally, there have been instances of students being dropped off without a parent or guardian present. We do have a sub, a policy in place, which includes kid clubs, and it's contracted with the Windsocket Police also, who are involved. And if they follow the procedures, it would, might alleviate any of these occurrences in the past. With that, we went to the middle schools and, middle schools reported another smooth, another, another school level reported smooth opening into the school year with only a few challenges. Some of the areas within the schools still have camera coverage gaps, but this is in process of being corrected, so it's, it's still ongoing. There have been minor issues related to the footbridge closure, especially in terms of keeping students away from the area. The placement of outside teachers has helped alleviate some of these concerns. Parking here at Hamlet has been an issue as parents are occupying teacher spots while waiting to drop off their students. But the administration is going to look into this, and they have, they're already having discussions with all relevant parties involved so they can alleviate these concerns. The high school and WAC Tech are up next. They also reported a smoother start to the year. However, they have some traffic issues in the rear of the school, which is resulting from last year's transition to the new traffic pattern. So it's continuing to cause delays. This is still being looked at and with Al and a few other individuals involved, before they make, so they, to explore potential changes before the installation of permanent traffic signage. Cafeteria lint issues persist relative to student behavior, but it's gradually improving, and I think that's probably always a concern. With that, we talked about options for emotional and, and behavior issues. PBS is still involved, which is positive behavioral interventions and supports. It's implemented at all three levels, and it seems to be providing some consistency for students at all, all grade levels. We also had some updates with our SROs and our ALICE training. And ALICE training has continued to be implemented. New staff at the middle school will be trained during common planning time. Training for the elementary school staff has yet to have been scheduled, and students at the middle and high school levels will receive training via assemblies, while elementary schools will be trained by their respective principals. We had, we did discuss cell phone issues, which is going to be an ongoing discussion, I guess. We do have a cell poly, cell policy in place that remains in effect, though it continues to be an ongoing challenge, particularly at the high school and middle school levels. Elementary schools, there weren't too many concerns. But we're, we're looking, school committee, and we're looking at different strategies and to explore to assist teachers with enforcing the policy on a daily basis. That meeting was adjourned at 4:58. The next meeting date is set for 10/14/25.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. Mrs. Kepiscus, do you have anything you'd like to add to that report?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the District-wide School Climate Subcommittee Report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Next, I'll ask Mr. Notoriani to give us the Technology Facilities Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, as or as of today, there are 86 technology work orders in the system, 64 related to technology infrastructure such as laptops and the internet and printing, 22 related to data systems and state reporting. I'm happy to report that student Chromebooks have been deployed district-wide at all grade levels. We are noticing with our fleet that over the years, the normal wear and tear has gradually reduced our Chromebook fleet, but we continue to maintain a one-to-one model for all students. Our technology staff has recently, as this week, Monday evening and Tuesday, were deploying Chromebooks here at the middle schools. There was a delay, which I'll talk about further in the memo here. State reporting, RIDE opened the 25, 26 state reporting portal in August, and data uploads are currently underway. As part of the accountability process, RIDE is requiring our district to validate and sign off on the 24, 25 state assessment data by September 16th. Some schools have struggled to complete the scheduling tasks for the start of school, but they should be finished by the end of the week. To assist, our central office data team has been providing additional support, and we've had to send our data team from McPhee out to several of the schools to help the secretaries get the schedules inputted into Skyward correctly, because schedules pre-populate rosters for educational platforms. And as I alluded to earlier, the Chromebooks at the middle schools were delayed far later than the elementaries and the high school because of making sure that homeroom lists and where students are going to have, where they're going to pick them up and drop them off at the end of the day. But we seem to be getting on task as of, as of this week. Student registration, there's an error in my memo. There were over 425 kindergarten registrations as of a week and a half ago, so we are significantly higher than we are at this normal time period. I apologize for the, for the mistype on this. Under Facilities Custodial Services, there are currently 186 work orders in the system, and we're in the process of dividing them up and assigning them between our in-house staff and vendors and contractors as necessary. We have multiple vendors that are addressing issues with the HVAC and heating systems to ensure readiness for the heating season. Additionally, the RIDE School Building Authority in partnership with Red Island Energy will be conducting an audit of our systems at the high school Career Tech Center campus. Similar to the project here at the middle school, the audit may provide an opportunity to replace the outdated controls in all of the classrooms. So as I alluded in our last update on our facilities, we have no control over the HVAC system, but we may be able to get it for free like we did here at the middle schools. It's worth noting that that doesn't mean they'll be replacing the units on the roof or anything like that. It's just the controls in the rooms. You have better flexibility in a, in a range of temperatures versus it just running wild with heat. All of our buildings were inspected over the summer by both the fire marshal and building official. We received the fire marshal reports, and we expect to see the building official report sometime later this month. Issues identified in these reports fall into three categories when it comes to both the fire marshal and the building official. The first category are issues that can be solved through a physical repair by our facility staff, and many of these repairs have already occurred over the summer. The second category of issues are repairs that can only be addressed through the capital planning process, where we need to do a significant repair. You know, they require a contractor or vendor issuing an RFP. And the remaining issues are issues that can be solved by the building administration locally, meaning the building principal. Examples of those would be similar to, like I said, with the facility stuff, would be improper use of extension cords, having electrical appliances in spaces that are not allowed. Or oftentimes we see that storage is overstacked and it's too high up into the ceiling. So those are things, what happens when the reports come in is I send them to facilities for repairs, I send them to the business office for capital need, and then the building principals are responsible for enforcing the fire code violations in the buildings. You know, no extra lights, you can't have inflatables in the hallway, you can only have 20% of a wall covered with materials, shouldn't hang anything from the ceilings, things of that nature. Next is school safety. We have resumed our bi, we will resume our bi-weekly meetings with the SROs and Detective Cameron studying next week. Following a review of our traffic patterns at the high school Career Tech Center and the middle school campus, we will be meeting with the administrators to discuss potential changes to improve traffic flow. We currently only have three SROs instead of our normal complement of four at this time. We're hoping the fourth one will rejoin us in the near future. We're hoping the fourth one will rejoin us in the near future. Upgrades to our telephone intercom clock and bell systems are underway. Most equipment arrived over the summer, and the contractors had begun installation in our server rooms. As you recall, this project was funded by a matching grant between RIDE and WED. With the upgraded, with the upgrading systems will be at the following locations, the high school, Career Tech, Hamlet, Villa, Savoy, Pothier, Citizens, and Harris. The 25-26 emergency plan template has been shared with each building administrator. The administration needs to fill out the plan and then submit it to Dr. McGee for review. Once reviewed and approved, the plans will be shared with the faculty, staff, police, fire, and Durham School Services. In addition to the emergency plans, each principal received a copy of the District Protocol on Radio Usage. The committee may recall at a school committee meeting, I believe it was sometime in the spring, that one of the concerns that was raised during public comment was radio usage and chatter. So we felt that it'd be proper to create a protocol across the district so each building doesn't do something different, and our teachers can have a consistent expectation everywhere. We created a radio protocol modeled on what they were using here at Hamlet Middle School, developed by the SROs. And keeping in mind that radios should be on, but at a lower decibel, because some of our rooms don't have intercoms. So that's a way to keep communication flowing, but also reduce some of the various interruptions that may occur. Facility staff are currently conducting building checks to ensure doors are not propped open during the school day. We have seen a few at the beginning and the start of the year, and we're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen throughout the year. Transportation, we continue to meet weekly with Durham School Services. At this time, we have a full complement of buses and drivers. However, Durham continues to face challenges with arrival and departure times, due in part to construction and increased traffic on Hamlet Avenue. Amongst that, there's other issues that they will need to address with the new leadership in place. And as previously noted, traffic patterns at the middle schools will remain, remain a concern, which is impacting transportation and which directly delays elementary, the elementary transportation tier in the afternoons. So buses arrive here, they then go to the high school, they then go to the elementary schools, but because of the construction and start to school and increased traffic, it's a domino effect, and some of that is out of the control of Durham School Services. We just can't control what's going on on the roads. And that concludes my update.
Any comments or questions?
Vice Chair Burke. Mr. Chairman, you know, there's a lot of mysteries that need to be answered sometimes. For example, why is football called football, but football is called soccer? Or why is the word pneumonia spelt with a P, but you don't say it? And finally, why begin a major traffic project on a bridge when the beginning of school happens right down the street? So I guess some of these questions cannot have answers. That's it.
I don't know how to respond to that. But thank you very much, Vice Chair Burke.
I'm wondering about pneumonia myself.
I, I don't, I don't know about the beginning part of the question, or if that was a statement question, but my understanding, from what I've been told, is the project on the bridge is actually Rhode Island Energy, the company. It's their project, and it's a detailed project. It's not a city project, because I would hope, as I think you're alluding to, Mr. Burke, is that they wouldn't conduct a project during the, but, but to be fair, it's Rhode Island Energy. So you see six detail officers on the bridge. They're helping us out with traffic, they're helping us with students crossing, but those detail officers, we were clearly informed by the police that they're paid for by Rhode Island Energy because it's a Rhode Island Energy project. I'm not sure who controls when they can do them or not. I've been told that they, because of your utility, there's state regulations, I don't know, but that's, that's what we were told at least, unless you have anything to add.
It's as good an answer as any.
Yes.
Because Rhode Island Energy, do their employees not have children that go to school so they know what the hours of school are, when we start?
There's a big disconnect there, Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yeah, it's a tough, tough pill to honestly swallow or digest.
It'd be nice if they could provide helicopter lifts where the footbridge used to be to get kids to school, or some other sort of way to get them over the river.
Yeah.
I, I... Let's move on.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Technology Facilities Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-08 Athletic Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier, Dr. McGee, what would you like to say about?
Front of the school committee this evening is the Athletic Medical Supplies Bid. We had several vendors responding, and we rewarded, awarded three vendors, actually two vendors, pardon me, with the, with the purchases. So just the athletic medical supplies for purely athletics, that's what we're awarding here.
Any comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 26-07 Athletic Medical Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier.
Front of the school committee is the 20, is the Athletic Supplies Order for the year, much like the Athletic Medical Supplies. We do this bid over the summer. We're awarding seven vendors with the parts of the order for the year, and this should set us up for athletic supplies for the year.
Great. Any discussion? Mr., Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Rhode Island Student Assistance Services Agreement. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you have in front of you the agreement for our Student Assistance Services. We're fortunate here in the district that over the years, we have received, well, we had received our ESER funds to support these. These are three positions, one at the high school, and one at Villanova Middle School, and one at Hamlet Middle School. They are, so the Rhode Island Student Assistance Services, they provide these folks to be in our schools, our secondary schools, for the purpose of preventing substance use and promoting mental health for our students. So they're similar to social workers. When we lost our ESER funds, they've been, they've been nice, they've been very generous in, in providing funding for a portion. However, we were left, when our, when our ESER funds dried up, with having to come up with a certain amount of money. However, we were fortunate to, the state and the city received opioid funds, and so a portion of that money was provided to the school department, and we are able to support these three positions at our middle schools and our high school. So it's just a great opportunity for us to increase the number of support staff we have for our students around the areas of substance abuse, mental health, and they work with our students, they work with our families as well, and they work with our staff here in our secondary schools.
Questions, comments?
Did we have these individuals last year?
So we did. We have had them in the past. We actually started, initially, a few years ago, it started with just one at the high school. We were able to increase that number to two at the high school and Hamlet Middle School. And then last year, I believe was the first year where we had three of them in the district.
And do we know how effective they've been? I mean, is there any measurement of what they've accomplished?
So I, I can have that information, I can provide that information for you, Mr. Burke. Right now, I don't, I don't have any real data, other than just anecdotal information with respect to the mental health needs and social emotional needs of our students, and the fact that having these, you know, these three professionals, in addition to our, the, the support staff that we currently have and have had for the last few years in our, in our secondary schools, it does provide a service. But I can reach out to our, our social, emotional, mental health department, and I, and I can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Having no other business on our agenda, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at